Master, Ms. Sampson, would you come to the mic, please, and open up prayer for us? Thank you.
Praise the Lord, Father.
Praise the Lord.
Amen. Father, as I bow before you in the precious name of Jesus, and nobody should make me worry that you call upon your holy righteous name. Father, we thank you, Father, for waking us up this morning and time and night into eternity. And, Father, we come before you right now begging for forgiveness, if they did anything wrong to anyone. Oh, God, we thank you right now, Father, for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross of us, and he may have a right and title to the tree of life. And, Father, it's a special blessing for this meeting this afternoon, Father. Oh, God, bless the people all over the land and country. Touch us, Father, from the crown of our heads to the soul of our feet, Father. Oh, God, please create in us clean hearts. Lord, please renew in us right spirits, Father. And, Father, that the people know that we both love each other, Father, as you've loved us, Father. You told us your word to love you one another, as I have loved you. And, Father, at this meeting go, Father, please touch the people as only one body of the Father offices and members, Father. Oh, God, give them the right path, Father. Father, we realize, Father, that end is going to and fro. See who can devote, Father. Oh, God, let us be your children, do what you tell us to do. In fact, now, in the name of the Father, the Son, this only goes to praise the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Ma'am, will you stand with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would please call her in.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
President.
Okay, board, what's the pleasure on item number three to approve the agenda? Any changes?
Some move.
A second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as is. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's approved. Next up is a request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk? I have Wendy Card and no address or anything, so you can come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman, and I apologize for the misinformation that's not complete because I just, I walked in, so.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just, I'm here as the editor of NewBurnNow.com, and I have a question for the board related to the structure and the roles and responsibilities. My understanding is the council, according to the charter, the government and management of the city shall be vested in the council. The city shall operate under a council management form of government. It says the mayor's the presiding officer and is the head of the city for ceremonial purposes. It says the city manager is the chief administrative officer of the city and is responsible for the day-to-day, all the operations of the city. And you all are the legislative body. Please let me know if I'm misinterpreting anything. I'm just trying to get all the information correct. A couple of years ago, there was an Alderman that also had a radio show, and still does, but they're no longer on the board. They said that the city was growing, and I quote, "The charter says," this is what they said, "The charter says that the mayor is the ceremony head of the city, city of New Bern." New Bern, it's very straightforward, the city has been growing, so the role has changed. And I'm here to make sure that the, what I'm reading about the charter, that nothing has changed, like the mayor, it's not a mayor council form of government, it's a manager council form of government. That's my question, because it just seems that there's a lot of decisions that are being made and directed by the mayor versus the board as a whole. And I'm not here to criticize, I'm just, that's the perception, not only mine, but people have contacted me. So, I'm also, I also have a question about the appointment for Alderman of the six, the Ward Six. During the last meeting, the mayor and two Aldermen voted to appoint former mayor Dana Outlaw to serve the remainder of the Ward Six term. According to the charter, no member of the board, after having served full term, shall be eligible for reappointment to the next succeeding term. And so is the mayor part of the Board of Aldermen or just the presiding officer and that's it? And I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other petition of citizens tonight, so we're going to consent agenda. It's a pleasure, the board, on item number five through seven.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is item number eight, discussion of reports and recommendations from International Economic Development Council. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. So, back in February, the city applied for a grant through the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments for, funded by the EDA, for consultants to come in and give us recommendations on highest and best use for two parcels. So, what we were looking at is the parcel downtown at the corner of Hancock at South Front Street and the Five Points property, the old days in line. We were fortunate to have several representatives from the IEDC, the International Economic Development Council, to come into New Bern in April. They spent three days with us. The first day, they were with staff. We gave them a tour of the properties, went through, talked about the history of the properties, and then we set up meetings with stakeholders from throughout the community. And so some of those included residents adjacent to the properties, businesses, nonprofits, representatives from the education realm, the TDA, the Chamber, Swiss Bear, a variety of city staff were there. And they had an opportunity to answer questions that the IEDC had poised on those two properties. So, if anyone would like to see those reports, we have them online at NewBurnNC.gov. You can click on the resident link, go down to master plans, and you'll see the link for the IEDC reports. And so there's some good background information, they did a lot of research. We really hope that we would get that report back in about a month, but it took them about three months to compile all of their information for this. So, like I said, the goal was to evaluate the two parcels and advise the city on those economic uses. And so the Five Points parcel is located at 925 Broad Street, it's Zone C4, and then the downtown parcel is Zone C1. So, historical on the Five Points parcel is located at the center of a busy commercial corridor and gateway into downtown. It was once home to thriving minority businesses in that area. So, there's an opportunity for neighborhood revitalization. And on the stakeholder side, there was interest in commercial activity, housing, parking, public-private partnership for development. And it wasn't mentioned at all during any of this, but an opportunity to sell the property just flat out as well. So, the IEDC came back with recommendations for four potential uses. One was to consolidate city services and put, build a larger building to put it on that location, do a public-private partnership for mixed-use development, have a center for entrepreneurship, and then RFP the space and have a national marketing plan and market the property in that manner. Then the other property was here on Hancock and South Front Street. This is adjacent to the railroad. The city purchased this property a few years ago. It's an unpaved lot currently being used for overfellow parking, it's not regulated. And so stakeholder interest showed a more diverse downtown businesses could be there, co-working or incubator space, increased hotel capacity, a grocery store, and family-oriented attractions. The IEDC came back with basically two potential uses. One was temporary activation, where you could have these sort of lights out there, food trucks, possibly some boutique shops placed out there from time to time, some artwork to go out there. They mentioned a merry-go-round, so a merry-go-round with a bear theme, and a stage for pop-up events. The other one was to repurpose the property to build something for more flexible mixed-use space, whether that be for a coffee shop, children's museum, a co-working space, and things like that. Their recommendations were overall broad. And so you see some examples of temporary activation, and so you see the stage area, and then you'll see an example of some boutique shops. The example here is from Southport, North Carolina, and then food trucks. So, staff recommendations on this, and I'm looking forward to some conversation from the board. On the downtown parcel, we're recommending temporary activation, possibly looking at working with Swiss Bear or an entity like that to do, offer some boutique-style shops that are portable shops that can be put in there on a temporary basis. We know the retail is few and far between downtown now, more restaurants are coming in, so kind of balancing that out, though, would give an opportunity for, to bring some more businesses downtown. And the recommendation for the Five Points parcel would be for a public-private partnership for mixed-use development. So, the city attorney's going to talk about some options on how we could go about doing that, that area.
Five points. We're largely only limited by our creativity when we have a public-private partnership. Some challenges there. You might recall from a discussion in the last year or two, where to have a partnership, we've got to go through what I call the beauty contest method, where we have a vision for what we want on that site, and we require a public component to that. And once we have that vision and a public component, we are then free to pick the developer that we like, remembering that the default rule is always, we go through an upset bid process. That's always the default with public property, government property. If we want to sell it, the presumption is there is going to be an auction, whether it is a literal auction or a sealed bid process, and the highest bidder wins with no conditions. So, we're trying to find statutory authority to get us around that default rule. The downside to any kind of public component to it is that it requires that that property be included in what's called a central business district. And you are free to define that central business district any way you like. Currently, it is the downtown three or four blocks, and I can't tell you which side of the blocks they fall on, but I want to say it goes up Craven to Broad, I believe it goes over to Metcalf, and down to South Front and closes the rectangle. But it can be extended beyond that, and in past research, I recall that there's no prohibition against having multiple central business districts, so we might set up a second central business district. And again, that's simply a way to visualize the project you want, find a public component to it, and then sell the property to a private developer. That is not to be confused with another flavor of a public-private partnership, and this can be very confusing. That phrase also means, to a lot of people, a process where the government wants to build government facilities, in which case they go to a private developer to finance, fund, construct that project, and then the city leases it back over many, many decades. That is also another flavor, and that would be a possibility there. That is basically a way to acquire and construct government facilities with private financing. It's, there's no difference in the city going and floating a bond or borrowing the money and building the same facility, except you put a private entity in the middle there, and they make a profit for doing all of that for you. Those are your various options. And in between, there's a myriad of options you have, depending on the vision that you ultimately adopt. What I will do to be helpful to you is, we have in our firm a matrix that we prepared over the years that shows you all the different tools you have and all the results that you can achieve with the various tools, because there are eight or 10 different methods for governments to convey real estate short of an upset bid process. And they all turn on what's the outcome you want, and then from there you can work backward to see which tools you have and what the constraints for those tools are. Help?
Question. When you said government comes in, would it be that they would come in and build low-income housing? Would that be a part of the government?
Technically, the government being the city of New Bern, technically, the city could do that. The city could give itself all the authority that a housing authority has, and then go about building public housing.
Along with, like, a small store, like a Dollar Tree or something like that, I'm just using it.
Right. That would not work for a public, that is not authorized under the statutes for, governments can't operate retail stores.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't be an option.
So, the next option would be that the property would have to be sold to a contractor, and that would be something that he would take home?
That's right.
Okay.
And the point, and the point you're raising here is, as I started with, we're only limited by our creativity. We can mix and match all these tools across that entire parcel. When you look at those two pieces, one part clearly is dominated on Broad Street, and what I call the back piece fronts and is dominated by Pollock Street. So, you could have one solution for the back half, different solution for the front half, or you can divide it east and west. You can mix and match all these ideas, and we could subdivide that piece any way that our current code will allow. And you can mix and match your vision with the various tools to put the property in the hands that we would like.
Got you.
Does the matrix that you mentioned, that you've developed over the years, does that include an option of entering into a long-term lease with a potential developer?
Well, I-
So, you're not, you're not getting involved in the upset bid process, you're not actually selling the property, you're entering into a favorable lease arrangement to incentivize a developer to come in and develop the property in whatever way, you know, a developer might be interested in doing so. And you're minimizing the cost for the developer with a favorable lease, long-term lease arrangement for them?
Yes, sir. Some of the statutes authorize a lease option. Most of those are in the economic development section of our statutes, and part of the problem with those sections is for, is when the government tries to give away property to incentivize economic growth, the checks and balances are job creation and tax base that's going to be created. So, to pick up an easier example, if we have a million-dollar piece of real estate, and we are trying to attract a developer, and we want to incentivize that developer to build on that piece of property, and their plan is to create two jobs, we do the math, and we can't sell that property for $10,000 and give them $990,000 in value because they've created two jobs. So, there are metrics that we have to apply, and that's one of the constraints that we're going to have here, is that the last appraisal I saw had a very high number on that property. Whether that pencils or not, I don't know, but it struck me as a very high number. So, it's going to make it hard to use some of these tools, because the job creation and/or the tax base that's created would have to be so high that it's hard to justify a deep discount in giving that away to a private party.
And these are requirements that are built into, in economic development?
Exactly. And we're always constrained by the Constitution, and again, to think of it simply, it's the public's property, and the public has value in that property, and we can't give that value to a single person privately for their own benefit. That's the big concept that we're working against. So, when we work against that, we've got to find these other benefits to point out that make it fair and makes sense from the public's point of view, because otherwise, they might just want their million dollars in cash and have you go take that million dollars and do something else with it, rather than give it to a private party. But the matrix to your question, yes, there are some lease options, and you'll see that.
So, another option is that if we look at it with a developer coming in, purchasing the property, and then coming up with a plan that would pretty much suit our general idea, therefore, we could move forward with that?
Two things have to happen. One, we've got to incorporate that into a central business district, we have to have a public component, and there's two ways from there. We have to have those two things. Then you can either imagine a vision for that. We would like, and your vision can be as broader, specific as you would like. One version is, we ask that the project provide for low-income housing-
Retail.
-and 30% retail, and, you know, 20% office, small business space. So, developers, those are the metrics. Come back to us and tell us what you're willing to pay for the property, and show us how you're going to meet our objectives. And then developers, if they have an interest, will come and present to you the beauty contest of, here are our different visions, and you pick the one you like, and you can pick the one that you like, even if it doesn't propose the most money to the city for the purchase price.
Scott, could you remind me about, we can't sell any property less than the appraised value. So, if we did the upset bid process, the minimum bid would have to be the appraised value, or at least we couldn't move forward with the sale unless it was the appraised value. Is that correct?
Auctions can work different.
Okay.
Auctions create in and of themselves the fair market value. So, you are free, so there's two ways to look at what you're saying. You are free to set the minimum at the appraised value. And I think we did that with the corner of Craven and South Front. You are also free to set it at 50% of the fair market value, and say, let the market speak. We want the starting bid to be X, which may be a considerable discount from the fair market value, but that's going to be the minimum starting bid. And then from there, we see where it ends up, because when you go through the auction process, the law presumes that the ending number was the fair market value.
Okay.
And we do that with our tax foreclosure properties.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's your next step? So, any feedback you'd like to provide, we'd love to have.
Wouldn't it be a benefit to go ahead and designate this property in the central business district?
It may be that there are steps and procedures to go through for that, if that's, if that's the grand vision that you're looking for. There are other options. You might rule out other options and see what's left. You might, you might, why don't we do this as an idea to make this more efficient for staff, is, let me get the matrix in your hand and show you the various options. And what you might find is that a majority would agree that you don't want to do these things, and then we'll end up where we're left, rather than trying to pick what exactly you want to do. That might be a little more helpful, to go through the process and create the district only to find, we're not going to use that process, we don't want to do that.
Would another option be to deed it to the redevelopment commission and then let them put restrictions in?
Yes, sir. There's, again, more, we're zooming out further, but that could be an option. The redevelopment commission has some tools that can be helpful, where they can apply some conditions that this board can. That's in the matrix. There are social programs where you might find a developer who would take down all or part of this for some kind of public use, and you could give the property to a nonprofit if you thought that made sense. So, those are some of the bigger, more global options that don't require central business district, and then we can focus better on what it is you're trying to accomplish.
So, what you're seeing on the flip side is that we can put that plan together and look at it and pick it apart and say, this is the one we would like to use. So, my thinking is, I think that's a grand idea to go with to start. I don't know the pleasure of the board, but I think that that would be something good.
Yes.
A good direction, anyway.
The, I will also mention, too, I believe Zeb has been thinking and working on this parcel for a long time, maybe the most knowledgeable person about what viable options are, which is why, I tap the brakes a bit, on the central business district. It would be nice to know that there are developers out there who had some ideas for this. Again, I hate for us to get down the road with grand ideas only to find that no one else shares our hopes and dreams, and there's no one to show up for the beauty contest. So, Zeb might be able to help us understand who are the players out there who could express some preliminary interest, that if we go through the trouble of doing all this, will you show up with some money and some ideas and be ready to proceed? It's a tough, as you know, in this climate, construction costs are very expensive, which makes the highest and best-used parcels difficult to pencil. We have meetings regularly with developers who come to New Bern with all kinds of ideas, and purely private, very profitable businesses that can't make them pencil without some kind of government help or participation. And that's on the private sector, where in areas that are very vibrant. This area has its challenges, especially during a period where construction costs are high. So, I could see a version where it's going to be difficult for a developer, a purely private-sector developer, to come in and make that site work. And I say that because a lot of folks, every fellow that comes through town, we send to that site to look at it, and they, you know, it's interesting and intriguing, and what do we have to offer, because it's a big ask, to get the rents and the resale value out of what they have in mind.
As you said earlier regarding the matrix, that can be a start for us, to look at the tools, to see what is viable, what is not, and if we could go through that process and the process of elimination, and then we can get a better little feel, like, look at what we would like to use the property for.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, what we could do is, I can get that circulated this week to you, and then maybe on the next agenda, you'll have some time to read and think, we can talk offline about it, and then at our next meeting, we can maybe have a more robust discussion about making sure you understand your options, and then seeing if we just can't eliminate some things that just simply don't appeal or don't make sense for that site.
I agree.
And see what's happened, see what we have left. Okay.
Everybody good with that?
I'll be helpful, have Zed at the next meeting.
Exactly. You read my mind.
Alderman Prill?
Yeah, Foster, under the public-private partnership opportunity, is the city looking at any such partnerships that might be available?
So, we're always approached by developers for potential public-private partnerships throughout the city for a variety of things. And so, yes, we've heard some folks that may have an interest, they haven't made an ask to see what is going to be involved, but yes, there are developers out there who have inquired. But yes, there are developers out there who have inquired.
And that would be, just to keep our nomenclature straight, for the beauty contest investment. As opposed to, we would like to build you a new fire station, and we'll build it and finance it, and you just pay us $100,000 a year forever under a lease agreement. So it's two different things. What the city manager's talking to is more of the beauty contest. It's the same, what can the city do to help us with economic incentives? That's what comes up regularly. And this parcel would check that box.
I could probably ask this question the next time we look at it, but just for curiosity's sake, if, and I'm not advocating we do this, but if we went through the upset bid process, and somebody came in and talked to us and said, hey, look, we will build X if you provide Y under a developer agreement. They go through the upset bid process, and they actually end up being the winner. They still, they're not obligated to do what they said. That's the risk with the upset bid process.
That's the risk.
There's no conditions.
That's the problem, where the redevelopment commission has some tools where they can put restrictions on accepting that highest offer. We'll accept this offer provided you build what you've shown us within this timeframe. If not, we'll give you your money back and take the deed back. The city doesn't have that tool.
And the reason that I keep, I mentioned about the beauty contest, because that's what we did on the Dunn Building. And we also did that for the Talbot Lot, and nobody came with anything.
Right.
The River Station property, it hasn't been issued that way, but there's an overlay, and there's a grand plan that the city paid for.
Right.
And no developer wants to do that plan. That's been 25-plus years.
Yeah, yeah. I think Zeb, and we'll get Zeb here for sure. I've taken calls, and I know calls have come to City Hall, about the Pollock Street half. There are plenty of private parties interested in that Pollock Street corridor. So I have no doubt that there's value there. The Broad Street piece is just a bigger challenge. It's a larger, it's a larger piece. And, you know, that side of the street has different traffic patterns. Because of the traffic, it's less residential-oriented, where the Pollock Street could have commercial and residential. But Zeb can share all that with us, and we can go from there.
So maybe we need to separate this parcel into two parcels?
That's something to think about, for sure. One of your many, many options.
Okay. Anything else? Sure.
Foster, on the other lot, the downtown lot, the temporary activation or kind of the pop-up business concept?
That's correct.
Who provides the structures?
Yeah, so that would either be, the city could provide that, or we would have to partner with someone. And I bring Swiss Bear up since they're the downtown economic development group. A group like that, for the property, could be sold to someone that wanted to do this. But there's a lot of research that has to be done on that property. That area does flood, so it would have to be brought up to a base flood elevation for whatever structures we put there. Of course, we've got HPC guidelines that we'd have to go through as well. So we've had some general conversations with development services, the big, what is, what can, and what can occur. And so far, what we've talked about shouldn't be any issues with those things. But we've still got a lot of research to do on it. Is that parcel in the downtown business district?
I was just getting ready to tell you that. Yes, sir. It's in the, I say that, let me verify. I'm 90% sure that that is in, that it is, you checked it? Okay. It is in this, in what we've designated as the central business district. So if you had a vision for that, that is something that we could solicit developers to come talk to us and see what they have in mind. I know the mayor pointed out that what we call the Talbot Lot, that we had a grand vision for that parcel, with first-level commercial, a public plaza, upstairs residential, and it just simply wouldn't pencil. But we didn't, we didn't look at any kind of watered-down versions of, if that doesn't work, developers, what would work that you could reflect on. And this piece would, in my mind, check those same boxes, same kind of use. And I just, I have no idea what a developer might imagine with that piece.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, appointments. We've got several. Alderman Kinsey, you have one for the board of adjustment?
I don't have anything, yes, sir.
Okay. We've got, this is open to the full board. This is for a board of adjustment alternative. This was for Mike Duffy, who resigned. Does anybody have anybody to put forward for that one? Okay. Civil Service Board. Ms. Clerk, did we have anybody that has applied for the Civil Service Board?
We do. Craig Bader.
Bader, yeah.
Bader, he has served before, several years ago.
He does, and I was getting ready to recommend him.
Okay, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Craig Bader to serve on the Police Civil Service Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Here, none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Bader is appointed. The other two are for the Bike and Ped Committee, which is one of us, and the MPO TAC. And the Dangerous Dog Board seems like this one, I know this is only once a year, but it seems like it comes up all the time. So Dr. Steve Stelma, Dr. Bobby Kotorba, and Donna Baker's term have expired this month. They are eligible for reappointment if the board would like to do so.
Have you talked to them? They are willing to?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint all three.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second to reappoint all three. Any further discussion? Here, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they're all three appointed. Are there any other appointments that I didn't touch on? Okay, Attorney's Report.
Nothing to report, ma'am, Mayor.
City Manager's Report. Just one thing, just a reminder, there will be a 9/11 remembrance ceremony tomorrow morning at 8:30 at the Fireman's Museum. Okay. New Business, Alderman Prill.
Since we did have, you know, public comment this evening, Ms. Carr, you are correct in terms of the form of government that the city operates under. That has not changed. I can't really comment on the former alderman's comment about the city growing. Yes, the city has grown, but that doesn't affect the form of government that we operate under. You did make a point that there's some language in the charter about appointment of a former board member or mayor. I forget exactly how you put it. But I would be interested in having the city attorney address that particular question, if he could.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to look into it and report back. I'm just not familiar with the exact sentence. I heard the word successive terms. So I just want to look at it and reflect on it, and I can get an answer out tomorrow.
Okay. I have nothing further, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Royal.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor.
Nothing, ma'am, Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey.
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Best.
Yes, Attorney Davis, could you provide that information to me as well, to answer to Ms. Lindy Carr's questions?
Happy to.
Thank you. And also, I'll just direct this to the city manager. I thought maybe George would be doing that. Do you know what is actually going on with the project over in the canal? The Duffield Field Canal that runs all through, Duffield Field all through the city? I know there's a lot of work being done. Do you know what is-
There are multiple phases of things going on in the Rose Hill area. They're expanding that retention pond over there. There's a study going on at Henderson Park for drainage in that area, the North Hills area. They're still doing, I think they're about finished with the design part of the ARP-funded projects that you have done. So, yeah, quite a bit of work is going on in there, whether it's design or actual construction.
Okay, because this is actually in the canal. I noticed they've got, like, the orange-type, I guess it's a divider or something, running down the canal. And I didn't know what was going on with that.
Marvin, do you have an update on that?
No, I'm thinking that they're getting ready to do the, is it the Golden Leaf? I believe the Golden Leaf Grant to do an expansion of that, the Rose Street pump station and elevate that. But I can get you an answer to that.
All right. Thank you. And that's it, sir.
Okay, and I have nothing. Do we need to close session?
No, sir.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Here, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.